If everyone would take their seats, we're going to get started momentarily. Thank you. Good evening. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone in our city council audience as well as our listening audience at WCBU. I'd also like to welcome the audience watching on cable channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call and roll. Ms. Allen. Ms. Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Regenbach. Councilmember Ruckriegel.
Present.
And Councilmember Velpula.
Present.
We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. Please join me, everyone, and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk? We have three proclamations. Our first proclamation recognizes Community Festival of Nativities. And we have Reverend Rick Simkins, Peoria Heights Congregational Church, and Donald Mayer, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Can you gentlemen come to the podium? The proclamation reads, "Whereas December 25th is the day Christians celebrate the birth of Jesus Christ as Christmas Day, and whereas the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, St. Vincent de Paul Catholic Church, Holy Family Catholic Church, Peoria Heights Congregational Church, Mount Holly Community Church, and All Saints Greek Orthodox Church have joined together to present the Community Festival of Nativities now in its seventh year. And whereas this year's displays will feature the historic St. Mary's Cathedral nativity scene graciously on loan by the Peoria Catholic Diocese Bishop Louis Tilka, 60 nativities from the Betsy Christiansen Worldwide Crache Collection, nativity scenes handcrafted by Pekin artisan Vic McDonald, a 30-piece Hummel collection from Peggy Dewey of Nauvoo, Illinois, along with the selection of nativities from the James and Amelia Govan Crache Collection from the Loyola University Museum of Art, will also be on display in addition to over 2,000 pieces from Diane Legg's Fontanini Collection and Roland Johnson's beautiful ink mosaic nativity cards. There will also be performances from local musicians, and children will enjoy the scavenger hunt and bingo. And whereas the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints is hosting this year's event titled "The Prince of Peace," at their place of worship, 3,700 West Reservoir, from December 1st through the 4th. This is a free event and open to the public. Hours and information may be found at communityfestivalofnativities.com. Now therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize the Community Festival of Nativities in Peoria, Illinois." Reverend Simkins, Mr. Mayor.
Just on behalf of all the volunteers, everybody's going, it's a great festivity. If you've not been there before, not only being the pastor of our church, I'm also a teacher at Holy Family School, which is also one of the places that is sponsoring as well. We take all our kids down there, as well as other kids come down to see the nativities. It's amazing. So if you've not been there, I would just encourage everybody here on the council to get there, bring your families. It's just a great way to start off the Christmas season and the birth of our Lord Jesus Christ.
And just to piggyback on what Reverend said, we invite everyone who wants to participate. If you want to volunteer, go ahead and volunteer. It's a wonderful unifying event. It's a large volunteer, it's the largest Christmas volunteer event in central Illinois. And it's just a great opportunity to come together and celebrate our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. So.
Thank you. It keeps getting bigger and bigger every year. Congratulations. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next proclamation is in honor of Community Foundation Week, and we have our own Mark Roberts, who is president and CEO of the Community Foundation of Central Illinois. Mr. Roberts, good to see you, Mark.
Hi, Mayor.
The proclamation reads, "Whereas residents, neighborhoods, institutions, and organizations in the City of Peoria have historically benefited from the ongoing generosity and donations from families, businesses, and community foundations. And whereas the Community Foundation of Central Illinois, CFCI, has granted over $84 million in grants to nonprofit organizations since its inception in 1985. And whereas the active presence of a community foundation ensures a strong community, economic vitality, and educational success. In the 2022 fiscal year, through the generosity of donors, CFCI distributed 2,299 grants totaling $6,850,000, with an increased focus on ending hunger, equipping and developing a strong workforce, and enhancing the local arts community. Whereas CFCI remains dedicated to ensuring access to necessary resources in our community and recently granted $1.2 million to Unity Point Health, Unity Place, in support of behavioral health needs. CFCI also partnered with the Gilmore Foundation, who contributed a matching dollar amount, bringing the total amount to $2.4 million. And whereas our community is fortunate to have the Community Foundation of Central Illinois as a resource for collective giving, their dedicated staff, board, and volunteers work every day to inspire philanthropy, improve the quality of life, strengthen nonprofits, foster collaboration, and provide leadership in central Illinois. Now therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, and on behalf of the Peoria City Council, do hereby acknowledge November 12th through November 18th as Community Foundation Week in Peoria, Illinois." Mr. Roberts.
Mayor, thank you, and council members, thank you. It's nice to be here with you. On behalf of the Board of Directors, and all the volunteers, and all the fund holders, and the small and mighty staff of the Community Foundation of Central Illinois, I'm pleased to accept this proclamation for Community Foundation Week 2022. Community foundations help connect people who care with causes that matter. As you might imagine, that's pretty delightful work that we get to do. We will work to build strong and vibrant communities. In this next week, we celebrate the vital role of more than 750 community foundations from throughout the, from out the United States, who are working to support essential services in their communities, as in this one, like healthcare, like food banks, like domestic violence shelters, like libraries, like volunteer fire departments, and on and on. In 2021, these foundations granted an estimated $30 billion back into their communities, which is a new high, all-time high, to a wide variety of nonprofits that do a lot of great things for their communities, including the arts, and education, and healthcare, and the environment, and disaster relief in many instances, and much, much more. Locally, as the mayor just mentioned, the Community Foundation of Central Illinois has granted over $6.8 million in our last fiscal year into our community, and we've granted over $84 million since inception. So we've made a nice impact on this community. We are growing rapidly. We are one of the fastest-growing community foundations in our state. By asset size, we are now the fifth-largest in the state, and we are the largest downstate community foundation. So that's very positive. We make an increasingly significant impact on the greater central Illinois area through really innovative grant-making programs that impact food insecurity, and workforce readiness, and issues impacting women and girls in our community. And the arts, and we grant hundreds of thousands of dollars in scholarships each year, including a lot of that to train nurses in our community as well. So along with the generous donors and the fund holders who really make it all happen for us, we're proud to play a very active role in supporting the quality of life of this community right here. Community foundations know that marshaling the financial resources of individuals, and families, and corporations, we can collectively address our community issues. Strategically, working with so many others, the Community Foundation is helping to pave the way for a better quality of life here. Let me note that next Tuesday, precisely as I understand, at 4:41, we'll be lighting the bridge in community foundation colors, so please keep an eye out for that. And thank you for this recognition of Community Foundation Week 2022.
Thank you for your continued leadership, Mark. The final proclamation is recognizing Native American Heritage Month, and we have Mr. Robert Smith, or Wolf Eyes, as well as Ms. Julie Ellis, if you would come to the podium. Thank you. The proclamation reads, "Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians, Alaska Native Peoples, and Indigenous Peoples. And whereas the contributions of Native American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. Their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich history throughout the United States. And whereas the name Peoria derives from the Algonquin language spoken by the Peoria Tribe of Indians of Oklahoma. While Peoria originally meant "comes carrying a pack on his back," a more modern translation has defined it as "to dream with the help of a manuto." And whereas we recognize the Native Americans who lived in Illinois and contributed to the cultural legacy of our community, we acknowledge those who made their home here first: the Sauk, Meskwaki, Potawatomi, Kikapu, Winnebago, Cahokia, Cascasquia, and Peoria, among many others. Whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as Native American Indian Heritage Month. Now therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby acknowledge November as Native American Indian Heritage Month in Peoria, Illinois."
It's a great honor to be here. I'm a proud Native American. As I stand in here today, I want to say thank you, Mayor. It took me five years to fight to get into this office, to get a proclamation for Native American Month. I've even been kicked off the city buses here recently because I told them I'm a Native American. I tell people, I'm not here today because today's election day. I'm not here for Republicans, Democrats, or politicians. I'm here for Native Americans. I'm proud of my people, my ancestors, and my heritage. But still today, even in Peoria, some of us still don't have rights. Even with police departments, we still have our issues with the police department. Some of our kids, mothers, and sisters are missing today, and co-cases are not resolved. I come to the city council and mayor today to say thank you again for acknowledging us as Native Americans. Because today, I went out and did a survey. Out of 250 people in Peoria, Illinois, only 30 knew that this was Native American Month. I had not heard on the news, media, in Peoria, Illinois, they acknowledged Native American Month in my vehicles, I says, "I am a Native American." So I asked all city council members, chief police, chief fire department, if you got employees today that work for you or even with you, please let them acknowledge that they're a Native American. Please let them acknowledge that they are people too. We are Americans too. We pay taxes to Peoria. We vote for you. We vote for everybody. We are also American people. I'm so proud of my heritage. We got six Native American women just voted into Congress. Three of them major offices. I just graduated from ICC back a few years ago. I was told, "I'm Native American, I'm not going to make it as a chef." I went tenth in competitions throughout the pandemic. I said, "Don't, don't mark me down yet. I might not be one of these chefs you hear about on the streets." I just came back with 2022 National Chef Champion. I went, I fought, I told everybody I went for my heritage, my culture, and myself. I didn't go on behalf of anybody. I said, "I went, and I fought, and I fought the best, the best of the chefs in the nation, and I went, and I came back with my title." Thank you very much, Mayor. And please, everybody, please acknowledge Native Americans. Please acknowledge any tribes out there. Potawatomi, my mom, my grandma was Potawatomi in Cherokee. I'm very proud of my heritage. And the face paint I wear today is war paint. I'm not declaring war, but I'm declaring unity and peace among all my father people. So in closing, I want to say, I bless you and your family on this day from our great spirits and God to protect you and guide your family throughout this holidays and throughout the season, and throughout your safeties on the street when you protect our people and you also fight for our people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Ellis? Madam Clerk? We are at the minutes. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I move to approve the minutes of the special city council meeting held on October 18th, 2022, and the joint city council and town board meeting held on October 25th, 2022, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Ruckriegel. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We have two town items. 22-374 is a request from the town officials to approve the October 2022 actual expenditures and to approve the November 2022 anticipated expenditures for the town of the City of Peoria.
Councilmember Graham?
Madam Chair, I move to approve his outline.
Seconded by Councilmember Velpula. Any comments, questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
22-375 is a communication from the Town Officials Budget Committee with a request to approve the proposed estimated tax levy of $1,338,046 with an estimated tax rate not to exceed 0.087714 for the town of the City of Peoria.
Councilmember Graham?
Well, we're keeping the levy the same as it was last year, which allows the town to have a roughly six-month reserve for any emergency needs. We've been seeing people come in for assistance that we haven't seen before. I think many of you know what the drivers of some of the demand for service would be. Supervisor of General Assistance, Latrina Leary, is here, and maybe we could turn it over to her to give a little more in-depth information.
Yes, we can hear you.
I provide you with all additional information about what is going on with the captain's team in the past year and the township. Let's start collecting data, because I've been in Austin. I realize coming into Austin, there was a data leak. So if you don't see, you're worth the fun of it. You see, it's from a number perspective, of the amount of money that is being allocated to different purposes. But I want to get a little bit more insight of who are we helping, how are we helping, where is this help going to? So I provide you with all additional information. As you can tell, that we have not, we've decided, the budget committee and I are a part of the budget committee, we decided not to increase the actual tax rate. At the moment, we are in good state of emergency. But in fact, with additional questions or any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you, Supervisor. Seeing no questions, councilman?
Uh, move for approval.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at public hearings. 22-353 is a public hearing regarding the 2023 revised budget.
Can I get a motion to open the public hearing? Moved by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Is there anyone present that would like to speak to the 2023 revised budget? If so, please come forth. Is there anyone present that would like to speak to the 2023 revised budget? If so, please come forth. Is there anyone present that would like to speak to the 2023 budget? If so, please come forth. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Moved by Councilmember Velpula, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
The second public hearing is 22-376 regarding the annexation of parcel identification numbers 13-01-503-004, 13-01-503-005, and 13-01-503-007, and 14-06-503-001, all in Peoria, Illinois.
We have a motion by Councilmember Seer to open the public hearing. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Chair, is there any common language for these parcels?
Thank you, Mayor. These are actual parcels, railroad parcels, that the city owns. This is part of the old Central Illinois rail yard, railroad line. It would be operated by Pioneer Rail Corp. This is kind of the northern spur. This is city property. We've owned it since Central Illinois Rail went out of business, and we're simply annexing this into the city so that it becomes part of the city.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there anyone present that would like to speak to the annexation of parcels identified as numbers 13-01-503-004, also 13-01-503-005, and 13-01-503-007, and 14-06-503-001? Again, is there anyone who would like to speak to the annexation of these parcel numbers? For the third time, is there anyone present that would like to speak to the annexation of the parcel numbers that were identified? Moved by Councilmember Seer to close the public hearing, seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Please cast your ballots. A motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the consent agenda. 22-377 is a communication from the mayor and corporation council with a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency. 22-378 is a communication with a request from the CDBG Public Services Commission to approve the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Public Service Funding Recommendations in the amount of $275,000. 22-379 is a communication from the city manager and fire chief with a request to approve the sole source purchase of 11 sets of fire gear from the municipal emergency services and distribution of gear from fire decks in the amount of $28,215. 22-380 is a communication with a request to accept the low bid from JIMAX Landscape in the amount of $80.90 per ton for a total purchase of $323,600 for 4,000 tons of rock salt for 2022/2023 winter snow events and replenished depleted stock. 22-381 is a communication with a request to approve a resolution for signatory authority with the Illinois Department of Transportation for authorizing the city manager to sign federal funding forms and electronic signature forms on behalf of the city. 22-382 is a communication with a request to concur with a recommendation from staff to adopt an ordinance annexing the property identified as parcel identification numbers 13-01-503-004, 13-01-503-005, 13-01-503-007, and 14-06-503-001, generally located west of Allen Road, east of Illinois Route 6, south of parcel identification number 13-01-200-001, and north of parcel of identification number 13-01-401-002, all in Peoria, Illinois. 22-383 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Advisory Committee on Police and Community Relations with a request to concur of Yolanda Wallace. 22-384 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Mayor's Advisory Committee for Citizens with Disabilities with a request to concur of Bree Mulebauer. And 22-385 is a communication from the city manager and finance director Comptroller with a request to receive and file the month-ended September 30th, 2022, unaudited financial report. And that concludes- And that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there items to remove from consent? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Twenty-two, three-eighty-one, please.
Thank you. Are there other items to remove from consent? Can I get a motion to approve the other items? Moved by Councilmember Regenbach, seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two dash three-eight-one is a communication from the city manager and director of Public Works with a request to approve a resolution for signatory authority with the Illinois Department of Transportation for authorizing the city manager to sign federal funding forms and electronic signature forms on behalf of the city.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not clear on this item. At least, our council communication says that the Illinois Department of Transportation requires the city as a local agency to have the mayor sign all state forms and federal funds connected to them. If that's a requirement, how can we pass an ordinance that bypasses the requirement?
Because you're passing the resolution. Currently, I sign a ton of IDOT forms in paper form right now, as your city manager. The issue is, as they move to electronic forms, the requirement is, it has to be the mayor, or if the council passes a resolution, it could be the manager.
Okay, well, that's fine. I, that caveat or that little addition is not in our council communication.
Understood.
So with that clarification, Madam Mayor, I move to approve.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Recrico. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at regular business. Twenty-two dash three-eight-six is a communication from the city manager and deputy corporation counsel with a request for a discussion on the feedback from the cannabis public meetings.
The manager?
Thank you. As you know, last week, we had both a virtual public meeting and a public meeting on cannabis. And our deputy corporation counsel, Chrissy Kaputka, is here to summarize the findings of what we heard at those meetings, as well as the survey results, which I think we've had over 600 people that have submitted information to the city.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the city manager mentioned, we had a policy session here back on October 11th, and one of the things that came out of that policy session was a request that we go back out into the community and solicit their input and provide that back to you. We held an in-person meeting on November 2nd here in the council chambers. It was not well-attended. We only had about four members of the public. We had three members of media and three members of staff. But for the members of the public that were here, there were a few comments that were offered. One person in particular was adamant that they really just didn't want to see any more restrictions on cannabis dispensaries or cannabis businesses in general. They wanted the free market to kind of bear that out. And then one member really had strong support for social equity applicants. And then we did have one emailed comment from an individual that was strongly opposed to seeing any more dispensaries or even continuing with the two dispensaries that we have. We did a virtual public meeting on November 3rd, and thank you, Mayor, for attending that session. We had a few members of the public. We did have one media, and then we had quite a few city staff that were on that. The comments we received, one individual strongly didn't feel that there should be any caps on the licenses. And then we had one individual that really wanted the council to consider whether or not you could do some things to allow for the social consumption of cannabis. Our survey actually runs for a couple more days, but as of about 4:00, Stacy Peterson let me know that we've had about 689 people respond to that. For comparison, when you did a survey on how you wanted some ARPA funds used, you had about 885 people respond. And when you put out a survey in regards to some police chief issues, you had about 600 people respond. So the surveys are right in line with what we would expect for this type of subject. We did do, and we'll provide all those results to you later this evening by email or tomorrow morning, but so far of the 659 surveys we've been able to review, 66% of those absolutely opposed having caps on licenses. And when those folks were given an option of, well, how many more, if you don't want a cap, how many more might you be willing to entertain? Almost 80% of those said six. We gave them an option of one through six. 80% selected six. 67% of the people that responded to the survey said they did not want to see any additional zoning limitations or distance limitations placed on these businesses. 60% supported onsite consumption. 61% supported steps to support social equity applicants. And of those 659 surveys that we've reviewed, 345 people did take the time to provide some additional comments. I will say that of the 345 people that did provide comments, overwhelmingly, over 20% of those all came back to one topic, and it was that they did not want to see a cap on the number of licenses. The next most common answer that we saw, or comments that we saw, actually indicated that they did not want to see the substance regulated more heavily than we saw, than we see alcohol regulated in our community. The few, the next runners-up, I would say, in terms of frequency, were applicants or comments that supported social equity. They did support onsite consumption. And then they, we had quite a few people that responded, they did not want to see them distributed across the city. There were probably 25 of those comments were individuals that were opposed to having cannabis authorized in the city. So the takeaway from the public input would really be that the majority did not want to have a limit on the number of dispensary licenses. Number two, they did not want to see any additional zoning restrictions, although here in the chambers, you had a really good debate about changing that special use permit process for these businesses from two years to six months. Public did not want to allow onsite consumption, or the public did want to allow, let me clarify, the public was in favor of allowing onsite consumption. And we've spent some time looking at how other communities are handling that, and we think that Springfield is doing it really well. They have two zoning classifications. One allows for a cannabis dispensary. One allows for a cannabis dispensary with onsite consumption. Both of those would go through a special use process. If you were to adopt something like that in an ordinance that we'll bring back to you, if one of the existing dispensaries wanted to then have onsite consumption, they would be required to go through the special use process again. There are some criteria we would need to add that we haven't completely identified yet, but we would want to make sure that they're proposing a plan that meets all those requirements we talked about with Smoke Free Illinois, that it is a, you know, sort of a separate part of their business, that there is a locked door, that it has proper ventilation, that staff are properly trained to keep anybody under the age of 21 out. And then, we did see in the comments and from the survey results that the applicant, that the community was supporting the social equity applicants. And if you recall, there are seven potential licenses that could go anywhere in our BLS region, and the community was in support of those. So if you think about some of the things that we talked about in that ordinance originally a few months ago, we're kind of where this discussion started. We talked about adding a definition of social equity applicant to mirror the state language. We talked about prohibiting them from being within 1,500 feet of a pre-existing cannabis dispensary. We also talked about how the state has decided that may work if you have two applicants trying to site at the same location. And then another option that came up during the public discussion was, you know, you could consider discounting the licenses for social equity applicants at 50%, which would be roughly in line with what the state does for their licensing scheme on the state level. So with that, you know, we indicated that we were happy to bring you the feedback tonight. If anything substantially changes in the next couple of days from any additional surveys that come in, we will certainly make you aware of that, but I think staff is looking for some direction on how we can craft some ordinance revisions to bring back to you for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Council, for the extra due diligence. And since there's two more days open on the survey, first, can you direct people how to access the survey?
Yes, let me find the website so I don't repeat it incorrectly. It is www.surveymonkey.com/r/cannabispeoria.
Okay. Or go to the Peoria, the city of Peoria website, and you can get a link.
I believe if you go to the cannabis resources link, you may also link to it from there.
Okay, thank you. So two more days, that survey is open. And so once you get all of the information, how long will it take for us to get kind of a report back?
We have the information on the surveys to date that we can provide either this evening or in the morning. Survey Monkey will sort of put those in chart and graph form. The comments do take a little bit to go through, but we will provide those as well. As soon as the survey closes, we can turn that around within a few hours.
Okay. I'm thinking once the survey closes would probably be the best time to get all that information sent to the council. What questions do you have for Council Kapuska? That's not right. Kapuska? Can you say it?
Kapuska.
Say it again?
Kapuska.
Kapuska. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a question. I noticed in the material, I think, there's been an update on the special use permits on the info that you gave us. It's sort of in the middle of the packet. One of the companies that had, that we had approved a special use permit for January 26th of 21, it says that the permit expired in March 26, 22, and now there's a line through it. Can you explain why that is?
And thank you for asking that question. In your council material tonight is the presentation that we gave to the community, which is slightly different from the one you saw. And in that, we laid out in a chart form, hopefully that was easily for everyone to digest, the special use permits that have been approved to date. We did not include the two for Trinity, but in January of 2021, the council did approve a special use permit for New Med East Peoria. That was approved by both planning and zoning and by the council. While our normal special use permits have a two-year expiration period, that ordinance actually had a 90-day expiration period. So it indicated if the business wasn't up, really with a retail business going, within 90 days, that use expired. So we have struck that one out from the list to make it clear that although it was approved, it is no longer in existence. So if a cannabis-based business wanted to now operate at 501 North University, it would be required to go back through the special use process and obtain approval from the zoning commission and then obviously from the council.
Okay, as a follow-up, so you said a special use permit, if they don't operate within two years, it automatically expires? Is that right?
Yes. So when you're looking at the chart, you'll see that the council also approved one at 4,600 Brandywine in February of this year. So that one is in existence until February of 2024. Now, what we know about that applicant is that they themselves are not a license holder from the state of Illinois. However, that doesn't mean that they couldn't associate with a license holder that would then go in there. It's not uncommon to see, you know, perhaps a real estate holding company be the business that goes through the special use process. If you'd like me to go down the list?
Well, the other one, I think there's a typo. It says it was approved September 27th, 22, and it expires September 27th, 22. Is that right?
It should be 24.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, so that makes me feel better that at least these permits that we've issued to people or businesses that haven't taken advantage of getting the permit and then opening, they have, if they don't do it within two years, it's automatically revoked, right? Or expired?
It would expire. We do think that shortening that period per the discussion of the council would be a wise path to follow. You could have it be as short as, you know, six months. Special, or social equity applicants have a shorter timeframe. They have 180 days where they have to have their storefronts up and running, so it would comply with that. Or you, we've also discussed having it be perhaps one year, cutting the existing two years in half.
And I am supportive of that because it feels like these other ones are sort of in limbo, why we have others that want to apply and with, and there might not be, I don't know whether or not based on the input, whether we'll put limits on it, but if we do, I would support a shorter period for them to have that special use permit and not be operating.
The two-year period, the way that it's operating on most of these, does make it difficult for staff to give you a definitive number on how many are here, how many could locate here because of the fact that they really need three things to operate. They need a state license, they need zoning approval from the city, and then they need a city business license. And those processes aren't necessarily linear. We prefer that they have, we're not going to issue a business license without first having a state license and the zoning approval, but some of those things can be, you know, working at the same time through their regulatory schemes.
Thank you.
Welcome. Good legal eye.
Pardon?
Good legal eye. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you Deputy Corporation Counsel Kapuska for your due diligence on this. Excuse my voice, by the way, I've got a little something, two-year-old at home sick, so this is not my romantic voice, but it's just a little something going on. But I appreciate you all collecting the data so that way the council can make the best decision using the data that's available right now. And I appreciate the clarity and great questions by Councilmember Jensen, letting us know that we do have one special use license that is essentially off the board now with New Med. Brandywine is still in limbo. And then right now, it appears Ward of Weed is moving forward. And then we have one in the queue that the council will be discussing at our meeting later this month. So I definitely agree with Councilmember Jensen. We definitely need to reduce from the two-year period to the one-year because we don't want to be sitting on our hands and then we have a situation with New Med who is now off the board, and then that prohibits us from entertaining another business. So this is all great information to help us make the best decision. I think when it comes to the social equity piece, I think it's very important that as a council, we really consider the spirit of the social equity designation. And when we talk about potentially limiting the amount of dispensaries that we're going to bring within the city of Peoria, if these are the applicants who have the social equity designation, who, when you think about it, when marijuana was legalized here in the state of Illinois, the reasoning for that was to give those who have been marginalized by this, by this drug at the time, an opportunity to participate in the commerce of it. And so if we now start putting up barriers and limiting those who have the opportunity to participate in it, that's not living up to the true spirit of equity, and I don't think that was what we want for our city. So I just want us to keep an open mind as we continue to let this evolve. I definitely agree with Madam Mayor. Let's let the couple of days of the survey, let's get a little bit more data so that way we can make the best informed decision. Thank you.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Kapuska, welcome back. Page five of your presentation, there's no numbers at the bottom, but it's roughly page five, talks about the zoning portion of it. Last discussion we had, we talked about having all areas being special use so that it's fair for everybody, and we give an opportunity to all our constituents to voice their opinion if one comes into their neighborhood. So I would just, I just want to point that out tonight so then when you come back with the final work, that hopefully it would show that there would not be any permitted use in industrial district, but be a special use everywhere. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Very welcome. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And appreciate the updated information. I'm counsel. Thank you. I would suggest, though, that the special use time be limited to six months rather than a one year even. With the special use process, if there's extenuating circumstances that the particular applicant would need more time, they could always applicant would need more time, they could always ask for that. But I think as a rule, that our standard would be six months. And I'm not sure how much you want on specifics here, but on the onsite consumption issue, my gut reaction is no. But I heard you say that Springfield has developed a unique way of dealing with that. So, while I would say I'm still a no, I would want to hear that to see if I could be persuaded otherwise. So, if you could have that for us as well as the specifics of how that two-tier system works. And I would definitely support Councilman Seer's request that the industrial areas are also considered special use so that we're consistent across the board. But those were the time limit and onsite consumption were of particular concern to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And in follow-up to that, Council Kapuska, were there any requests for onsite consumption from any of the dispensaries?
That has not been a request, but the way that the state licensing, the state statute works, it has to be authorized by the municipality. So, I think that there may have been sort of inquiries from the dispensaries about whether or not that is something the council would entertain, but that's never been part of our local ordinance or part of our application.
Stan? Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Graham?
I don't expect you to be an expert on the economics of cannabis business or use or anything else, but what's the problem? Why aren't they able to drive the vehicle after we give a permission? What's the issue? What's holding them up?
Councilman, is your question, why aren't they opening after we give them permission?
No. Why are they letting this time elapse and they don't open? I remember how contentious the evening was when we approved the one on Glenn. I remember the discussion as relates to the one over on University in Glenn. What's the problem? Is there not a demand for it? Is there something they should be doing down in Springfield that they're not doing to make it easier for those who want to be in this business, to operate in this business? I mean, I'm hearing all this, but I'm wondering what the holdup is.
Sure. Well, the facilities at Glenn and University are both operating. I think if we think about the facility on Brandywine, because it is one that came in early in February and they got a special use permit, and then nothing has occurred. There were no state licenses available at that time, and part of that is because of how the lottery system worked with multiple litigation ensuing, re-lottery, multiple litigation ensuing. So, I think that we have not seen the facility at 4,600 Brandywine open because that particular business or that particular applicant did not have a state license at the time. Perhaps they anticipated being part of the social equity licenses that were rolled out over the summer, or perhaps they were just a developer hoping that they would have the special use permit, and that might be a lucrative way to lure one of the dispensaries to come operate at that location.
So, we have the first one approved in the City of Peoria, Trinity, on University operating. And we have the other one, where's the, where's the second one located?
Trinity first operated at 3125 North University. That was their medical facility. Then, the way the state rolled out the licenses, they got to operate adult use there. They were given a second license for adult use at 2301 West Glenn.
On Glenn, right. And that was the one, we had a different person in the fourth district office at that time, and we had an interesting debate about that, and we had businesses weighing in and neighborhoods. You know, I just, I don't know if there's a way of looking at the ability of the applicant to actually go through with the creation of a business before we subject our residents to this whole process. It just seems like a tremendous waste of time. I know in the governor's debate, this came up, and I think Governor Pritzker said they were working on making it easier for businesses that were approved to actually start up. We'll see what happens. I do, Mayor, I do my own monkey survey. Every time I go out, which is a lot since the pandemic ended, to a neighborhood association, it comes up. I was talking to Councilor Allen about some feedback I got at McKenzie Room. I call it the Menard Branch Library, the North Branch Library. And there were some seniors that were quite open about it. They said they used it because of their arthritis and other conditions. It was more or less a medicinal use. So, it is interesting to get the feedback on it, but I just, I just can't understand why we have such a lack of follow-through. But, thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Rigenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I neglected to mention that as we continue to debate this and wring our hands over the next steps that we're going to take, we have another applicant in queue now. So, there will be another dispensary applicant discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission in December. So, we'll be discussing that here on the floor in January, I would assume. So, I brought up the idea of a moratorium two weeks ago. Not that I think that's the key or all, but if we really have that much angst about the direction of this, we, it would not be a bad idea to put a pause in this, and maybe moratorium's the wrong word, but it seems like at this point, that's out of the question because we continue to get more applicants. So, I'm comfortable going forward with the discussion that we've had here, and I think we're offering some clear direction to Corporation Counsel's office. But if my colleagues are concerned and want a moratorium, that's something that I think somebody needs to take the bull by the horns and offer. Otherwise, we'll be having the same discussion in January for a new applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the additional feedback, Council, and I will be continuing with our discussions as the council meetings move on. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
22-387 is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Counsel with a request to approve the Third Amendment to the Revised Redevelopment Agreement and Parking Deck Lease with O S F Healthcare System and 124 Adams Property Holdings.
Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the third redevelopment agreement amendment that we have with O S F. As you know, the first redevelopment agreement identified that they were going to be spending $127 million on their project with about $1 million of public improvements on the block. That was amended in July of 2021, where we asked if they would be willing to take on the improvements on Washington Street, up to 1.25 million. That was then later amended in August of 2021, moving that up to 1.5 million. As they've been wrapping up their construction in the building, they've had about $750,000 of unanticipated expense for the fire suppression upgrades that they have in the building. And then, what we just discussed with them was allowing them to retain any of the 1.5 million that we set aside from the TIF in the proposed public improvements to be utilized for those purposes, and that would be the Third Amendment and hopefully the last one that has to come before the council.
Any questions? Can I get a motion? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one quick question for Mr. Manager. I mean, I know we all have invested a lot of money downtown. We do want a vibrant downtown, and we're all big supporters of O S F, of course. My question, though, has nothing to do with this, has to do with the 700 workers downtown. I mean, they're nowhere close to 700 right now. Do you know when you think that building would be, will be full, basically, so that businesses that are making commitment downtown will have more traffic, obviously?
Great question, Councilman. I don't want to speak for O S F. Let me ask them that question, and then I'll get your response back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilman Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, are we approaching a deadline on the distribution of these TIF funds?
We are. I mean, we have, if, for downtown TIF proceeds, those have to be spent by the end of this year. So, and then the TIF expire.
Yeah. And that's what I thought. So, so we need to move on this rather quickly or not?
We do.
So, all right. So, the motion is to receive and file, and that's...
No, the motion would be to approve this redevelopment.
To approve it. I'm sorry.
Yes.
And we have that on the floor. Thank you.
Did you make a motion, sir?
Isn't there a motion on the floor? I will make that motion.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Rigenbach. Any other comments or questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. 22-361 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R3 single-family residential district for a short-term rental for the property located at 2724 West Newman Parkway.
Thank you. Any discussion or can I get a motion, excuse me, can I get a motion to approve? Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to make a motion for item number 22361 be approved.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
22-348 is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with a request to hold a discussion on the 2023 revised budget. And in your packets, there should have been a yellow handout distributed on Friday with a revised report back from Public Works.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We have five report backs that we want to discuss before we jump into the budget motions that we have in the packet as well. The first report back is on sidewalks. I'm going to ask Director Powers to cover that. The next two report backs will be covered by our Finance Director, and then our Public Works Director will take number four report back, and then I'll take number five. So, the first one is just the sidewalk locations. Director Powers, I'll turn it over to you.
I get situated. I've been sleeping in a bay window for the last week in my son's hospital room, so I'm very sore right now. So, I hope you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager. The first report back relative to sidewalk locations, we've identified the actual locations that we have identified that will be performed in '23 with '22 funding. The reason is because we use the '22 funding for design throughout the year. We combine the sidewalk in need of repair along with sidewalk participation, and then the added funding that we use to augment it and selected these sites based on the criteria you see below and that I had reported in a previous council meeting using complaints. We then consolidated site visits, assessment of the conditions at the various sites, prioritized based on what we saw as need versus the need, and what you see in front of you is that list. Then, going forward, what we propose is the '23 funding that you hopefully approve in this budget. We would go through the design and implementation or installation, both in the same year, meaning what you see identified here, along with any funding that you approve in the budget, would all be installed in '23. Does that make sense to, I hope that makes sense to everyone. That is our proposal, that we would be able to do both in fiscal year '23.
And one project that we do have listed for 2023 funding is the street, Lamont Street. There are 14 property owners on Lamont that are looking for, they were originally looking for special assessment or sidewalk participation, and I think we're going to end up probably discussing with them a special service area to accomplish the same result in order to get sidewalks on both sides of the street on that stretch of Lamont.
Again, differentiating between, I guess, a past practice of special service area versus special assessment area, I should probably defer to council in this regard, in the ease, if you will, not involving the courts, one versus the other. And the other bigger difference is the number in favor versus the number opposed, which would be 50% plus one in either case. In a special assessment area, it would require the courts for staff to, and excuse me, council, tell me when you need to weigh in if I get this wrong, please, that we would have to or circuit court demonstrate the benefit to each homeowner and what that individual benefit would be before we can enter into a special assessment agreement with them, with 51% of the participants wanting that to take place. With a special service area, we simply would take the assessed value of the properties. People would pay based upon that assessed value, which would then address the equity component that I had addressed, I believe, two meetings ago that we were trying to get to anyway. The bigger difference between the two is 50% plus one could stop that special service area from taking place. So, it kind of shifts the point of the vote from for to against and not involving the courts at all, the assessment taking place by staff. So, I hope for the benefit of education, I did not butcher my almost lawyering, sir. But that was my explanation that was provided by council, and that's the 14, I believe it's 14, or is it 18? 14 homeowners on Lamont that are wishing to participate in what we would have formerly used in sidewalk participation as a more, I'd say equitable and maybe inclusive way to go about that in the future if residents chose to, along with what I proposed, which would be to remove all of it and simply let us this year embark on a full-blown asset management system, which would be a holistic system, taking into consideration asset conditions that don't care about anything outside of its condition and allow staff through an engineering assessment to work its way through the city with funding. And to Council Jensen's point, increase funding if that is the pleasure of the council, keeping in mind, we have a finite amount of money to do that, but if that is your wish, that's what we would do and still attain the same thing as I believe the Councilor Jensen was asking for, which would logically, the older areas of the city are likely to find themselves on the list anyway based on condition because they're older sidewalks. So, I think staff, not I think, I know, staff stands on the opinion that any asset throughout the city speaks unto itself, and its condition should drive our spend. And I'll leave it at that.
Director, where is the 1800 block of Lamont? What council district is it? What zip code is it?
Say that again, Mayor.
Where's it located? Central Park? Where's it located?
I don't know. Mr. Manager?
The 1800 block of Lamont would be in District 2. So, we're, and it's more of the portion of District 2 that used to be in District 4.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I certainly support...
I certainly support the city doing it by condition, or what you call the asset management, instead of doing, I think these properties, I'm asking for money to fix the bad sidewalks, and not where the owner has to pay fifty percent and the city pays fifty percent. So, I would like, while we have money in the budget, I keep saying that, to set aside a specific amount to focus on the older neighborhoods in the city besides six-one-six-oh-five, where we're hoping to get, I think it's a million-dollar grant, I think, is that right?
It's, it's two million, I believe, but it's still up in the air.
But it's going to be, it's already been tagged for six-one-six-oh-five sidewalks, so since we have a surplus, I would like to set aside another portion of our budget for sidewalks in the rest of the older parts of the city. And so, I mean, I welcome, you know, these specific addresses that you have on GIFT and Biltmore Heights, but that's using 2022 funding. So, I would like us to use some of the surplus for the 2023 budget to focus just on repairing the sidewalks in the older neighborhoods in District Two and District Three, and I don't know if there's other parts of District One that aren't in six-one-six-oh-five.
Thank you, Counselor, and just to be clear, the twenty-three budget amount would not be the quote surplus budget, is what is programmed, what would have formerly been sidewalk in need of repair and the sidewalk participation program and augmented for that amount. If you're asking to increase...
I'm asking to increase and just set it aside for the older neighborhoods, a portion of, since we have a surplus, we don't have a deficit budget for this next year, and I would like that specifically to be in the budget. I talked to Andrea a little bit about areas, you know, I would want to talk with her some more to get a number, or I would like to get that from the professional staff, what would be reasonable.
Well, the budget includes eight hundred thousand dollars for next year, less the fourteen houses that we would be talking about new sidewalks on Lamont. So, if we're successful in getting the earmark for six-one-six-oh-five, we would come back to you and say, here's the locations for 2023 that we'll call it, we'll call it six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. I don't know what the cost is going to be on Lamont, but we'll say, here's the six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that would be going in where we'd need sidewalks the most in the city. So, that's the piece that Public Works doesn't have for you yet, because they're in that process of looking at where the greatest need is for the sidewalk locations that we have, for the money that we've budgeted right now. If you're looking to put more money into the budget, we need a budget motion, like we're going to talk about other budget motions, asking to make a change to the budget and where that money is coming from. That's what we need to have, and we had asked council at the last meeting about, are there budget motions that people want to have, so that we can get those prepared for you? So, that's what we would need to have, some sort of motion saying, here's the amount of money that we would want to take, and here's where we want to put it. So, that, absent that, we don't have any...
Right, and I don't want to take away from what's already been budgeted for the other districts, for the fifth district and the fourth district. This would be in addition to that, is what I'm thinking, because I think that's important too, but while we have the money, let's work on strengthening and improving our other older neighborhoods, too.
I do want to point out that that earmark is, there's no guarantee associated with that earmark. We've got election, I mean, things change. It only went through a committee within the House, so it really has not passed. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Powers, what was the term you used in asset management? I think that's a great idea, and I think going back to the introduction of the PCI index, you know, five, six, seven years ago, that the hope is that we take the politics, if you will, out of this, and we actually look at where the need is the greatest, and I would venture to say, piggybacking on Councilwoman Jensen, it's going to be in those older neighborhoods, you know, as far as the sidewalks go. So, I don't know if you need direction, or if you want encouragement, but I would love to see that kind of plan put in place, that asset management. I interrupted you there as you were starting to answer, so forgive me. Go ahead.
Just to that point, Counselor, specifically, we will, upon adoption of the twenty-three budget, I actually, in the staff meeting today in Public Works, pretty much gave direction, January three, or whenever everybody is back, we will be embarking on writing an RFQ to write the requirements document, and then an RFP to have a holistic asset management system. And you touched on a good point. You think PCI, and this isn't uncommon for any elected body, you think that's infrastructure, that's pavement. I speak to sidewalks, I does not speak to lights, I does not speak to anything buried, I doesn't speak to the things that are Public Works, that we're responsible for, curb, gutter, all of those things that are quote "infrastructure." A holistic asset management system would take those things into consideration that are overlaid. In other words, as we're doing a PCI, it may be stormwater that's buried under it, and if we had a system that condition rated all of those things, all of them, we had condition ratings for sidewalk, condition ratings for storm sewer, which we are, quite frankly, doing now through our televising efforts. So, some of this is coming together. What we want to do is have a system that brings a sense of logic about it, that we can bring you, quite frankly, I want to say storybook type picture books from a GIS perspective, and show you what's there. You are still the policy body, but it would be much easier if I can show you those conditions in a red, yellow, green, if you will, and then let you vote based upon what I can show you as a professional, rather than today kind of chasing an issue as it comes up across the spectrum of infrastructure. And that's quite, Public Works does that quite often. Quite frankly, we have a finite amount of money. If we move money, we're invariably moving it off pavement to something else, sidewalk, lights, whatever that case might be for that day. That's what we do want to get away from, and that's what that system will do for us, or that's what we hope it will do for us.
And I would just add to that, yeah, I think we're all aware that PCI was pavement only, and it didn't even take into account traffic counts or whatnot, but it was pavement specific. If there was one flaw in that, I would say it was communicating that on a regular basis with the council, because we would, we got an initial report, and then it was not as regular, I think, as the policymakers, at least this policymaker, would like it to be. So, that would be, as this expands, and I love your vision here, but the most important thing is for us to understand where those needs are. So, that way, as the third district councilman, I'm happy to support something in the first or the second or the fourth or whatever district it's in, because I'm well aware of what that need is. And I think once we see that need, the politics of it starts to melt away. So, big job, but I think we got the right people looking at this, so thank you very much.
Absolutely, this is a labor of love, Counselor, no doubt. I mean, and again, even possibly removing the number, numbers are data, and quite frankly, PCI is data. If I can come in here and to this body say, this is the hood of failure, high, medium, low, and I said, failure. If I put high on there, then you get it, meaning that's what the Public Works Director is telling you, there is a high risk of failure, and that's a combined value based on the overall infrastructure. I think I'm telling you a better story. I'm telling you a more complete story, and that's the goal. Thank you, sir.
Item number two?
Item number two, I'm going to turn it over to Director Craddy to talk through question two and question three.
I will start with question two, which was a request for a summary of our capital improvement plan by council district. What this report back is attempting to do is taking the hundred and eighty-five pages of the capital improvement plan and breaking it down into what is being funded by each individual council district, as well as overlaying the funding sources. So, whether or not it's grant-funded, debt-funded, local motor fuel tax, or general capital fund, and laying it out in that format. Within that report back, obviously, we have the projects that are easily identifiable to be in one council district, and you'll see that across the top of those charts. The second area is those projects that aren't necessarily identifiable to one. We will label those with multiple council districts. So, these are all the projects listed by the individual districts, and I'm happy to answer any questions on that report back.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Craddy, for this impressive report. I have a, I received a phone call that someone thought that this report would be divisive, and actually, this is not why I asked for this report. I asked for this report because I want people to know that we are committed. Now, we are a team, and as my colleague, Mr. Regenbach, just said, you know, we, I believe, personally, I believe that that number, that District Five should be as strong as District Four, and Four strong in Three, and Two, and One. I mean, it's like a chain. We all have heard that, you know, this analogy about chain, we're as strong as the weakest link. So, I think I want to make sure that people know, because I know these numbers, and I want to make sure that all my colleagues and everybody that ever questioned if we're investing money, where the money is going, we always, six years, six, this is my sixth budget, I believe, we always have invested fifty percent of the money in the fifth district, and the other fifty percent divided between District Two, Three, Four, and Five. It's always been like that for the five, six years I've been here. So, and it's okay. My colleague, Mr. Orlers, said last time when we had this, is that enough? No, it's not enough. It's never enough. It's never enough. But I just want to make sure that our constituent understand that we are committed to vibrant, excuse me, vibrant downtown, and we are committed to invest money in the first district, and the numbers, these are facts, these are not opinions. We've done this for the last five or six years. I just want to make sure people know that we are committed to the first district, and make sure that every district is as strong as it can be. So, this is, my goal was not to be divisive and take some money from the first or second or the district, I just want to make sure people understand these numbers. Now, I got a question for you that, from one of my colleague earlier. Can you define for all of us what a surplus is in our budget, please?
A surplus is when you, from an accounting standpoint, is when you have revenues that exceed your expenses for that given year, is the simplest way to look at that. Obviously, that can be planned in certain years, knowing that you might be running a deficit in future years, but really, that's kind of the layman's way of explaining.
So, you as Director of Finance, though, how do you look at a surplus?
I look at a surplus really as cash reserves on hand. That's how I look at it, is what does, what do we have available to meet our obligations with the city?
And you're obviously looking at next, all your reports are looking at next three to five years, so you're looking in the future, correct?
Correct.
So, the surplus is not really surplus in your, from the training you have received, correct?
Correct. Really, as I look at it, when you have a surplus, it's a snapshot in time. It's kind of like what I always explain with the audit, it's a snapshot in time of what the position the city is in. But decisions that are made today are going to have effects three, four, or five years from now, and so having that full, long-term viewpoint of that helps us understand what that surplus might mean today.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Director Craddy?
Report back number three, Councilman Seer had requested us to look at, previously in report back number one, we had provided a ten-year payback, or a ten-year, I guess, plan to get the garbage fund to a positive fund balance. We had some conversations and looked, and one of the things that we've always had contemplated and discussed with council was what the closure of Landfill Two would do to the cost of running the garbage fund. And what this report back is showing is that effective for 2025, which is currently slated for Landfill Number Two to close is the end of 2024, the tipping fees or the cost for us to, in essence, dump the waste that we collect, will drop in half. And so, that's why when you look at 2025 and beyond, we go from having a surplus in that fund on an annual basis of close to three-hundred-and-sixty thousand to about one-point-six million. And so, that will really expedite that payback of that negative fund balance, so that the city would be able to make it by the end of 2023, or 2027.
Seven. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much again for this report. My goal for this report was, I knew we could do it in five years instead of ten, but I want to make sure that all the items that we spend this garbage fund on is really in the right pot of money there. Like, you and I were talking about, I think sweeping the street should not be paid by the garbage fund. So, by making sure we're investing and paying the right bills, I appreciate the fact that we can hopefully achieve this goal in five years instead of ten. So, thank you very much for your work. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll reserve my comments for later. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Manager?
Thank you. I'm going to turn back to Director Powers to talk about report back question number four, which is the division of streetlights between Ameren and the city.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Item one that I'd like to point out here, and it is one of your attachments, and I don't know that you have it in your packet, there will be this map that shows Ameren versus city lighting, because when you look at the numbers, meaning five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven city lights owned and or operated by the city of Peoria versus five-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-nine owned and operated by Ameren. And when I say that, that, to your point, Counselor, of your question at the last meeting, that is what that means. That is full from design, installation, and ongoing operations and maintenance. We pay the light bill for the Ameren lighting that's installed. We are a customer, and they're responsive to those requests. However, if you look at the map, you see it almost looks like Ameren is a dominant point in the city relative to coverage area, and you see it very easily depicted that the city obviously has more concentrated lighting, or spaced more, just by the color you can see in the shading. Councilman Jackson will obviously note, in District One, where it drops short is exactly in that area of Ameren where we're working now on alley lighting and so on, and trying to deal with some of those things. But just north of there, obviously, is the city's lighting. So, that's really what I wanted to point out, just relative to how the lighting is divided within the city of Peoria. It's almost fifty percent each. You can easily identify Ameren service, their wood poles. Our poles are concrete or steel. Ameren lights are wholly serviced by Ameren employees, and we do not have access to them at this point. The manager and I are trying to get to a point where we may, because we want to address smart lighting. Early on in that process, we, they identified, because of my past experience with wood poles and smart lighting, early smart lighting involved fiber, cable, those things, and on a wood pole, if you put them on the outside of the pole, people cut them. Hence, it's much more easily to, or easy to facilitate smart lighting on metal or concrete poles, because they have basically conduit, or it's contained inside, so people can't tamper with it. So, we are left with the option of using remote or wireless technologies, hence, we need Ameren to agree to us to have access to their poles, to take that initiative forward in the areas that we've identified where the issues are. So, that being said, I just wanted to take the opportunity to address that, too, since we're talking about lighting overall. I also would be remiss, especially with the huge jump we saw in utility costs for electricity across the board, with the initiative that we took on with ten, which is the second part of the report. The city proactively, the year we, in 2020, into the pandemic, if you will, is when we started looking at converting our entire inventory to LED, and actually kept some of our electricians that we were going to have to let go because of the fiscal times we went through that were very difficult, and not that long of a memory for me. It was very difficult as a Public Works Director to work through... It was very difficult as a Public Works Director to work through that, but they actually were kept on as a part of the installation crew to convert our entire lighting inventory to LED, and that is done. And with a considerable savings that I would say has been swallowed by inflation and what's happened with that. And so I would say, thank goodness, we did what we did, because it is still a savings. It's just now been dwarfed by what inflation has done to the current rate, if you will. So I am very glad to report that we did that. That project is complete. The way it reads now, it looks like it's happening in the future. That is done. So we're averaging, I would say that, well, we're estimating to average almost $200,000 a year in energy savings cost alone. And then the rebates from Ameren, I want to say, were in the neighborhood of 400, it was 466,000, I think, is what their estimate was, which you also had to release from them in your packet as well. In our review, I think we estimated 430,000. It's in that neighborhood. So again, we have seen considerable savings by converting to Ameren. Ameren's policy relative to conversion to LED is as they burn out, they replace them with LED. And I do not know what percentage are LED versus what was the old type light bulb. So I believe that answered your question, Councilor Kelly, unless you have further questions.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I think you and I know each other fairly well, so I always have a few other questions. But really, a fundamental question that I have is, what is it in Ameren's franchise agreement with us or whatever? What is there that says to them, "Oh, we have to provide some lighting at our own expense, even though we pay the bill"? Why do they have any lights at all? It seems to me that there's some sort of an obligation they have, apparently, to the city to provide some lighting. If this is not the case, and they're just that generous that they'll put up lights for us with no remuneration, I think that's wonderful, but I rather doubt whether that's what's going on. How is it that they have lighting assets where we pay the electricity, but how is it that they have those assets? And I think this goes to Councilman Grab's question as to...okay, so that's my question, Mr. Director.
So the utility agree...that predates me, so I'm going to ask the manager to weigh in there. I can tell you how we, as a customer, interact with them and how we get placement of those poles and where the cost is or isn't incurred. So I can do that very briefly, I guess, and then turn it over to the manager. So if we find a dark spot in an Ameren area, and that dark spot is within 75 feet of an existing service pole, we get the pole, the wire, the mast arm, and a head, and a light at no cost. So that's an installation through request, and we simply pick up the electric bill. Now, how we entered into that agreement long term, I'll defer to the manager. I'm not aware of that.
Just before you do, so are you saying that that arrangement is area-specific?
That arrangement is with the city of Peoria.
Yes, I understand that. But it's within the city? Is it in a small area or areas?
It is citywide. Within the Ameren service area, if we find an area within 75 feet of any existing service point other than where there's a transformer, we can put a light on a pole with a transformer, or we can set another pole, or, excuse me, Ameren will set another pole for us if it's within 75 feet of existing service. They will set the pole, the mast arm, and the light at no cost for installation and simply add the power or the charge for service to our bill.
All right. Thank you.
So, and some of this obviously predates me, because we're talking about Ameren...the precursor to Ameren was the Central Illinois Light Company, and we had a franchise agreement with Silco, and part of that agreement was that we would use their infrastructure, their electricity infrastructure, to put up streetlights not only in downtown, but throughout the city. Much of that was overhead electricity lines, and then as the city grew, some of that went underground in some of our newer neighborhoods that you see out in the fifth district where you don't have overhead electricity lines. As streets were changed over time and improvements were made, lighting was put in by the city, and we took over the maintenance and responsibility of that. So it's been...and that's pretty consistent in Decatur, in Springfield, well, Springfield has their own utility, in Bloomington, and Normal, Champaign, Urbana. They have similar experiences in terms of lighting and how they operate with Ameren as a utility. So that's...but we did have a franchise agreement with Ameren that has changed over time, and now, because they're a regulated utility, much of their franchise agreements are pretty standard across the entire state in terms of how they have to operate. So some of it is a historical vestige of just how we kind of came about and how we developed as a city, and some of it still retained today, as Director Powers was talking about. If we wanted them to put up street lighting, they certainly will. We just have to pay that electricity charge.
Okay. I'm not sure I've got the answer, because it seems to me that then we would just say to Ameren, "Light up these alleys."
Well, in some areas, that's what we've been discussing with them, and they haven't been moving as fast as we'd like them to.
But are they the solution to the alleys?
They might be. If there's poles back in the alleys. In some alleys, we don't have utility poles in the alleys, because you have utility poles in the front of the street, and if that's the case, they're going to say, "Well, we're not going to put anything up in that specific..."
So this would include existing poles only?
Only. We're not asking you to put up new poles.
Okay, thank you. You know, I'm just trying to get my head clear on this whole thing.
Point of clarification, unless that is within 75 feet of an existing pole. If it's within 75 feet of an existing service pole, they will set a pole.
Okay, so they...okay, so, thank you. It seems to me that we should...I don't know. It seems like we're not totally serious. We're waiting for somebody else to give us a grant so that the city ends up doing it, where apparently we already have an agreement with this company to go ahead and provide lighting in some of these areas where we really need it, regardless of whether they're wooden poles or whatever.
Well, only where there's wooden poles. They're not going to put in metal poles.
I understand. I understand. But am I missing something, or do I have this?
It takes two to tango.
Yeah?
And in some...as we've been working with Ameren, in some areas, they haven't been as cooperative as we'd like them to be.
And I'd like to take that...pardon me, but I'd like to take that a step further and to say that Ameren is making a lot of money off of the city of Peoria with these old poles and these old lights, and they have a responsibility to the city, to their customers as well, to upgrade these old poles and these old lights that are only being changed to LED if they are broken or they burn out.
Well, okay. You know, I don't mind if they make money, but I do mind if we've got the ability to say, "Light up these alleys."
We have.
Well, apparently, it's some sort of big machination, and, you know, we'll kind of get to it, you know, or, you know, it seems like it's...
Not on the city's part.
We'll talk about this a little bit more. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Member Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I'll try to keep my comments brief. I'm just as confused as everybody else is at this point, but just to piggyback on the last comment the city manager made, the ball is not in our court. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager? So what do we need to do to put pressure on Ameren to fix this longstanding problem? I mean, we met with them over a year ago. We've identified areas. We continue to demolish homes. Right across from me, there's only one house on the other side. There's an alley behind it, and it is a huge safety problem. It is dark. What do we need to do to get them to take action to light up our alleys? This is...I mean, it's just getting kind of old.
You know, we need to continue to talk to them and continue to get them to start to move, and that's all we can do. I mean, we have had the conversations. I think that they have not been moving with the speed and the care that I think that a company of their size and professionalism can do, and that's something we'll continue to push them on.
How can we put pressure on them?
I think you are tonight.
We can arrange a follow-up meeting.
I'd like to, Madam Mayor. You know, we had that meeting over a year ago.
They have a new CEO.
And we've done what our due diligence in terms of identifying alleys and areas that are just completely dark and pass that information on to Public Works, and we haven't heard not a mumbling word from them. I'm just kind of over it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, Members Grayup?
Well, if we go back far enough, we had primarily a locally-owned energy utility company, and they sold out to a company called AES. Happily, AES did not provide service for the city of Peoria for more than a relative handful of years, constant problems with power outages, software issues, et cetera, even in the depth of winter time, to the point where then Mayor Ransburg and I went to Springfield to testify when they wanted an increase in rates affecting our people. They operated in accord with the tariff agreement, and we wanted them to know that we meant business. Shortly after our testimony, they ended up selling their asset, and that's where Ameren comes in. And we had local citizens who put together a lot of money, almost one and a half billion dollars, to purchase AES, but instead, the green light was given to Ameren. And our congressman at the time thought Ameren was a great fit for Peoria, over and above our local investors, who had raised about one and a half billion dollars. When that horrible tornado hit in November, it's 2017, Washington, Illinois, I think we would all have to agree that Ameren stepped to the plate and provided what they say their job is and what their job is mandated to be, and that's to provide safe and reliable service for the people. And so what they did after the tornado smashed Washington was they, by and large, went underground for safety and reliability. We haven't always been so lucky to have them do that in Peoria. For example, out on Allen Road, they did not go underground. We had some of those poles get blown down as you're on your way to Menards not too long ago during a winter storm. So I think it's a work in progress, but they have to understand that we have a responsibility to our citizens for safety and reliable service, and we're going to hold them accountable because that's how they justify the rates that they charge. It's been worse, but it's been better. I would say they're somewhere between the locally-owned investors and AES. They're better than AES for sure. I think Peoria was the first city outside of the Third World where AES provided service, and boy, it showed. It showed with constant software problems, power outages that were interminable. So it's better, but, Manager, how many times have we discussed Ameren?
Quite a bit. Quite a bit.
This has gone on, and it goes way back with previous city managers too, but I think we...Mayor, you're right, we keep the pressure on.
Yeah. Member Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I noticed, Director Powers, when I was taking my kids trick-or-treating in my neighborhood, there were these temporary lighting fixtures that had been put up in our codicil, and I know certain neighborhoods across the city, they have in their covenants that they don't allow street lighting. And so I was wondering, are those owned by the city or are those owned by Ameren? Are you aware with what I may be speaking about?
Yard lighting?
No, no. They were...they looked pretty legitimate, and so they looked like they were installed professionally. It was my first time, like, ever noticing them, and so I wanted to inquire, because I think that's a good option, especially for those neighborhoods who have...don't have it in their covenants to be allowed to have official street lighting, that maybe these could be some good temporary options for them.
It's...and you may be referring to something along those lines. There are some municipalities that have gone to that, if you will, that type of lighting, where it's a part of the development, where lighting really becomes a part of the home but is paid by the city. In other words, it looks like residential lighting. It looks sort of like a yard light.
So these were...so we have a couple of...like, they weren't in no one's yard, though. Like, we have a couple of open areas in our neighborhood, and so that's why I didn't think that they were owned personally. But I can inquire a little bit too, though, but I wanted to ask the question just because...
Amaran lights, if that's the case. I know we have...we don't have any, but again, those are things that we've actually been considering as staff to propose what we would do going forward with lighting into some of those areas where, say, we're now seeing requests for ornamental lighting or lower-level lighting, is taking it more to a ground-level yard lighting, and the city somehow putting it on a system so it looks aesthetically nice, but it does almost look like what you saw in the older suburbs where you saw a yard light or something along those lines. So those things are available, and we can discuss them as far as a practice going forward, but I'm not familiar with the lighting you're talking specifically, but we can figure it out.
Yeah, I'll take a picture and email it to you so that way you can see, but I think as we're having this conversation of lighting and public safety, if this is a more of a convenient option, again, especially for those neighborhoods that, you know, when they were originally built, they have in their covenants that they weren't allowed to have official street lighting, this is a way to lighten up those areas. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Mayor.
Looking forward to getting it.
Councilmember Ruckregel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, and I'm not going to belabor discussions here, but it might be helpful. Sounds like there've been some conversations that I think have been pretty important, maybe about a year ago or so. If you could maybe just include in one of the communications where some of those lights have been proposed, and maybe some minutes, if you have some minutes or some notes from that meeting, just to bring in the full counsel up to speed, that might be helpful. Thank you.
All right. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The last report back is pertaining to the Unity Place capital contribution. We had previously discussed three potential options, the first being a million-dollar contribution out of the general fund, the second being the reallocation of Depot Street coupled with $125,000 from the general fund, and then the third option being that we shift some of our American Rescue Plan funds around to allow for the capital contribution to come from American Rescue Plan funds, because behavioral health is an allowable expense under the American Rescue Plan. Hearing the feedback from council at the last meeting, we came up with two other options that...the first is really to Councilman Ruckregel's point, which was, you know, if we looked at, you know, that is our way to fund this, but looking at tightening that up or looking at what projects...the difficulty is most of our projects are small in the general fund, in the general capital budget that we have. The 875 that we have set aside for Depot Street can be shifted into the TIF, and then that is really just frees up then that capital funding that we have at $875,000. So what we said, and we took, you know, what Councilman Ruckregel had said of looking at taking a scalpel to it, we just narrowed that down to saying maybe just limit it to an $875,000 contribution. The fifth option that we came up with is looking at what Councilwoman Jensen had recommended of maybe saying, maybe if we just narrowed that down to a smaller amount, but do it over a number of years. And so that fifth option would be looking at it, saying, "Let's narrow it down to $275,000 over three years." That would be roughly at $820,000. That would be roughly an $825,000 contribution, and then leave it at that. So that, that would be the way that we could participate with Unity Place, but doing it in a smaller dollar amount that has a smaller budget impact over a three-year period of time.
Options there. So those are all the report backs?
Those are all the report backs. So we do have some, some budget motions that we, I don't know if there was any comments.
Go to the motions. We've got a couple of council members, Councilmember Velpula.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So first of all, thank you so much, Mr. City Manager, for coming up with a couple more options. The thing that I didn't, I mean, I just wanted to understand is, what was your rationale to come up with the 875 on one and 825 on the other option?
I think the, the first was that we had the 875 in the general capital budget for that Depot Street project. So that was the rationale behind that. And then looking at what Councilwoman Jensen had said about maybe the dollar amount doesn't need to be as much, but also spreading it out over three years, we just looked at, at saying, what could that be if we wanted to do a three-year contribution at a little bit less? And so that's why we recommended the 825 at the 275 a year.
Thank you so much. I like the option five, but again, I just wanted to ask you, I'm unaware of this, what was our largest contribution to such kind of initiatives?
Well, I, you know, as we start to look at, at $250,000 on an annual basis, or $275,000 on an annual basis, that's in line with what we've given to other nonprofits that, that if we look at, you know, amounts that we've given for violence prevention funding, for example, we just gave the Health Department money for Cure Violence. There's, there's been, you know, funding that we've had in the past for, for different contributions that we've done. That's, that's not uncommon to see a number at that level, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you, City Manager.
Member Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, first, on your most, one of your recent comments there on the violence prevention, I, I think that those not-for-profits that would get those grants are a little bit like a contractor for the city. Not, you know, this particular Unity Point project is not something that the city is funding and managing and putting out RFPs on and all that. I don't, I don't think it's quite the same. I don't, Councilman Velpula has already spoken, so I hesitate to reiterate what, one of the points he brought up last time, which was, I, I don't think we really do this sort of thing. I'm, I'm very much in favor of what they're doing. I think I've expressed that, what Unity Point is doing. But we don't, as a public body, we don't take public funds. I, I don't think we have much of a history, if any, of taking public funds and giving them to a worthwhile charitable enterprise. I guess we can, but one of the other things that Councilman Velpula also said was, if we do this for them, there are lots of other worthy projects out there that could come to us and say, well, 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 what about me? I'm, I'm a little hesitant. I, you know, I mean, if, if the sense of the council is to go along with this, okay, I'll, I'll certainly go along with it. But I think that those items are things to be considered along the way.
Councilman, if I could just add, in Agenda Item 22378 tonight, we allocated $275,000 to eight different charities for public service funds. I mean, that, and that, those were allocated dollars, and we do that on a regular and recurring basis with, with monies that we receive and that we, we take out and, and provide to the community. You have done this in the past with South Town TIF dollars that have gone to nonprofits that are doing work that aren't generating any TIF increment or any property tax revenue, but it was done for the betterment of the region and inside where that was located. I would argue that, that Unity Place, with its, its direct tie to the, the co-response model that the police chief is, is working on to try and address behavioral health issues in our community, is a, we will be a direct beneficiary of this effort because of that role that it will play in the community and the impact that we're trying to address the way that we police differently because of that. So all of those things, I think, are, are what makes this kind of a, a mitigating set of circumstances for this specific issue.
Okay. First of all, CBDG funds are, are, there, there are rules that have to be followed in order to put that money out there, okay? And we follow those rules and we put that money out there. TIF is similar. I'm not saying we shouldn't do this. What I'm saying is, this is something we haven't done before. We've not directly with, without the prompting of the federal government, without the rules and regulations of the state government, just on our own, taken money out of our fund and given it to a worthy charity. If we want to do it, okay, but it is not the same, in my opinion, it is not the same as what we have done in the past. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. Council, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, I, I spent the last week thinking about this, and, you know, there's been a lot of discussion as we no longer are home to Caterpillar. The focus has been trying to invest in our assets, our healthcare jobs and the quality of healthcare that's provided here. And I, you know, I thought a lot about the discussion that went around the horseshoe last week. And I, I, I see this as an investment. Unity Point is among our top four, three or four employers here in the city of Peoria. And if we want them to remain in that position, I think we, as a city council, should look for ways to collaborate and invest in the, the work that will, that will provide those types of services that are so desperately needed throughout our community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last time we had this discussion, I, too, asked a question around presidents, you know, have, this is something that we have done in the past, just to be careful of the slippery slope that we can potentially create with funding something like this. And I understand the hesitancy around that, but I do believe, though, that we're either going to pay now or we're going to pay later because, as we know, mental health right now has to be a priority for our community, especially when you talk about our children and our adolescents. And so I would love to see the city of Peoria on the right side of history and make this initial investment. I'm leaning towards the option of spreading it out because I think that allows us to be, be a little reserved when it comes to thinking about our budget, and this is something that we can just support over the long term. So I think that was a good suggestion by Councilmember Jackson, but, or excuse me, Councilmember Jensen. But I definitely want us to make sure that we do invest this, invest in this because our community needs it. They're going to be, regardless if they're in West Peoria, East Peoria, they're going to be serving many constituents of the city of Peoria as well, too. And so I'm glad that Unity Point Health is making waves in this necessary cause for our community, and I would definitely love to see us support it. Because like I said, if we don't invest now, we're going to pay for it later. Thank you.
Inside your packet on item number 22-348, if you go into almost the middle of the packet, right after the map, there's a map on Peoria and Ameren streetlights. There are six proposed 2023 revised budget motions for consideration. And now's the time that we can entertain motions. There's, there's six of them listed here. We've had discussion, we've had report backs, we've had a lot of discussion. Councilmember Reganbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to kick us off with motion one.
Okay.
In the last week, we just had a ribbon-cutting of sorts of the bridge crossing over War Memorial for the Rock Island Greenway. And we'll hear from some of our enthusiasts later in public comment on that. So this amendment would allow us to complete that project to the riverfront from the existing terminus on Park Avenue. So I would move for approval.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, could I add just a little context to this? So tonight, we annexed property in, in the northern section of Peoria that was part of the old Central Illinois Railroad. This stretch of, of trying to finish up the trail in the southern section, we're continuing to work on. Pioneer Railroad has the trackage rights on the southern section as well as the northern section. They've agreed to give up the trackage rights on the southern section, and we're working to, and what that means is then we can take the rail out. We, we don't, we no longer, with the prop, the rail bed would be abandoned, and we would be able to put the trail in. We've, we've applied for this federal grant, or for the state grant, the ITEP grant to come in, and IDOT has told us that they would not like the trail to connect down through Adamson-Jefferson, just because of the way that the street operates. So what we're looking at doing is withdrawing our grant application this year, applying again for it in '23 so that then we would get it in '24, to then run the trail along the riverfront, through Grant Street, well, through Detwiler Marina, through Grant Street, and then up Abington and connecting back in with the trail. Where we, we, at your last council meeting, you just approved a culvert project at Abington and the trail. So we would be looking at, at connecting all of that. I, I want to thank Mike Rucker's here in the, in the audience tonight, and he, he gave everybody a nice map, which kind of shows everything. I think he's going to talk about that probably under Citizens to Address, but, but that's the connection that we would want to make, and, and we continue to move that forward, so.
Thank you. We have a, a motion and a second on the floor. There's no further discussion. Please cast your ballots. Okay, all right. Madam Clerk has asked that we restate the motion. Councilman Reganbach? And that was seconded by Councilwoman Jackson. Please cast your ballots. Passes unanimously. Do you want to speak to the second one?
Sure. The, the, the second motion was at the request of Councilwoman Jackson. This would be to include the Kickapoo Terrace project. This would be a $550,000 increase in the Stormwater Utility Fund in 2023.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a quick comment. I had an opportunity to go up there a couple times and look at the situation. And this is the absolute worst street in the city of Peoria. And I, I'm, I thank the Public Works Director for moving forward after discussions with the people, the residents in that neighborhood. They've been dealing with this for probably 10 years, Madam Mayor, so prior to the development of the Stormwater Utility Fee. So this is money well-spent, and so I'd just like to thank Director Powers and the team for moving forward and fixing this problem that is so desperately needed. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Want to make a motion?
Yes. With that, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the proposed City of Peoria 2023 revised budget to increase the Stormwater Utility Budget in 2023 to include the Kickapoo Terrace Project.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Manager?
The, the third motion is really just making it clear that we put $500,000 in the 2023 budget in the Stormwater Utility Fund to repair curbs and gutters, and we wanted to extend that in the capital plan for 2024, '25, '26, and '27. So this is just, it's really amending the CIP for those out years for that funding.
Councilmember Jensen?
I move to amend the proposed City of Peoria 2023 revised budget to increase the Stormwater Utility Budget in 2024 through 2027 to include the curb and gutter program.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Graham. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Manager?
The, the fourth item pertains to the, the street lighting projects that we had the announcement for last week, that we're going to be the recipient of $2.5 million of street lighting projects. I know it says sidewalk in the motion, and that's a mistake on, on staff's part writing that up. We have three projects that we needed to, to move some of the funding around. It actually nets out to be a reduction of $90,000 in 2023, thanks to the $2.5 million of, of state funds that will be coming to us. So this would be to, to really just amend the budget, the local motor fuel tax budget, and reduce it by $90,000 to, to cover those street lighting projects.
So it should say to cover streetlight projects?
Lighting, not sidewalks.
Councilmember Graham?
Move to approve, as just delineated by the city manager.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Allen. He had his hand up. Discussion, Councilmember Jensen?
I just think this is a great program, and just wanted to thank Representative Gordon Booth again for securing this pretty big grant for us to improve our street lighting in the older parts of the city.
Thank you. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Manager?
The, the fifth budget amendment would be a $65,000 increase in the capital budget to cover the cost of a downtown parking system study, and, which we've discussed previously.
Councilmember Graham?
Move to approve that study.
Can you read that motion, please?
I move to amend the proposed City of Peoria 2023 revised budget to increase the capital fund budget by $65,000 to undertake a downtown parking system study.
Seconded by Councilmember Reganbach. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Manager?
So the, the last budget motion, and really this is just to probably get direction from council where you want to go with, with this, would be any motion on the Unity Place capital contribution.
There, there were, I think, five options that were presented by the manager for consideration. by the manager for consideration. Does anyone want to go for one of those? Councilmember Jensen?
I, I support option five, which is what I asked the city manager to bring back. This would be for the city to provide an annual contribution for, I believe, three years to Unity Point as they embark on this new program for $275,000 annually. I think it's the most fiscally responsible way of handling this request, although we have a healthy budget. I've been around this horseshoe so many other times when we haven't. So I don't, I'm not comfortable giving $875,000 at once, even under the other option that Councilman Ruckregal suggested. I think this is a better way to go. So I move to amend the proposed City of Peoria 2023 revised budget to increase the budget to fund a $275,000 contribution for this 2020, '23 budget, and then continue to do that for the next, the two years thereafter.
Councilmember Ruckregal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, and I think there are kind of multiple ways that we could go about this. But I think that this is also a capital way that we have a motion on the floor, and so I'd be happy to second that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I can talk to my colleague, Ms. Jensen, for exactly the same reason you said. I mean, we're going to be, this will be a different group here in a couple years from now. If you can change your motion, if I understand your motion, it's the next three years, correct? Or the next four years?
Three years.
Okay, so three years. So since we don't know, I, I just don't like to make commitment for future, future councilmen that would be here. Maybe I would maybe try to change their minds, maybe do two years, since we're going to be here before there's some changes. I would feel more comfortable if you were making it shorter time. I mean, and we can always revise that, correct, Mr. Manager? Like two years, we can make a two-year commitment, or even a one-year commitment at the time. Can we do that so that we don't vote for somebody else that's going to be in these chairs later on?
I, I think that that's definitely a possibility, that you could look at, at doing this on an annualized basis if that's something the council wanted to do.
I would prefer that personally, but it's not my motion. So just something for you to think about. I don't know if you'd like to amend your motion. We can do that on an annual basis instead.
Eight twenty-five, I think it is. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut your volume off. That's okay. Okay. Councilmember Graham?
Well, there, there are some appropriations that we approve that transcend a four-year period regardless. I think it's prudent that we do it in increments. This allows us to kick the tires a little bit after Carl comes in in '23, see how things are going.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. If there's no more discussion, maybe there is. Councilmember Jensen?
Just to, another point to respond to Councilman Seer's question, and I think Councilman Graham touched upon it. In many of our budgets, we do infrastructure projects and approve them, and we approve them for three or four years at a time. So I don't think this is any different than that.
Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one nay. Seer? Mr. Manager, where do we go from here?
Well, thanks, Mayor. That's all the budget motions that we had prepared. At, at this point, we would be preparing the budget for adoption for next week. We'll have an appropriation ordinance, a levy ordinance, a bond levy ordinance. I'm not sure if we'll have any abatement ordinance. I'm going to turn over to Director Craddy. I think we'll have a, a stormwater fee ordinance revision that will be freezing the stormwater utility fee for next year. And then we'll have the, I believe we'll have the parking rates. We'll be there coming forward, which we're anticipating in the budget. And am I missing anything, Director?
No, you got it right. There will be some additional abatement ordinances for some of our SSAs, and we anticipate bringing those to you at the first meeting in December.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk. Sorry. Councilman Kelly, you had a comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity and of these motions to just comment on, on a few things. Number one, Councilmember Seer asked for a definition of a surplus. And of course, the, the definition was just fine. But surpluses give opportunities, I think. We've taken some opportunities here with our surplus to increase our spending. I think much, and I voted for, I think, all of it. One of the things, one of the entities, I think, that we have left out of consideration for our surplus, surplus is our citizens, our taxpayers. Especially if we can make investments, giving money back to taxpayers in such a way that it enhances the growth of our community. Once again, everything is wonderful right now. We've got all kinds of money. But we've all seen the curve on the pensions. And what are we doing about that? Well, we're not doing anything about that. We'll, we'll, we'll think about that later. We've been thinking about that later for a long time. I'm not trying to cast a lot of blame here. But we have an opportunity, I think, to make some investments in our community that might bring about, that might allow our citizens to bring about growth in our community that ends up coming back to us in the way of regular, organic revenue. We have some motions that we're going to see, some further budget motions we're going to see in December, which is, which is fine. I would like to ask the manager, or ask the staff, to bring us motions that would eliminate our building permit fees in our city, which are a nuisance, but that would make very good headlines for our city. And I think, and it, and it's not a whole lot of money. It's a fair amount of money, but it's not a whole lot of money. And I, I think it, it might create a little bit more buzz about the city of Peoria. The other item I'd like to have the manager bring back to us in December is getting rid of our landlord registration fees. We have, we have a problem with substandard housing, which all cities tend to have. We have a problem with it, and our solution 25 years ago was to, among other things, increase the costs of, to landlords of operating within the city. So what are the landlords going to do with their increased costs? Well, it's got to go somewhere. They can't raise rents to cover it, like everybody talks about. There's this thing called a rental market. They have to stay below the rental market in order to make money. They have to keep their costs below the rental market in order to make money. Okay? We increase their costs because we don't like those guys, no matter whether they have nice properties or lousy properties. Okay? It's easy to pick on them, I guess. I think this is a wrong-headed, it's a backward kind of thing. We increase their costs, guess what? And, and we don't like, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We don't like the maintenance that they do, so we're going to make it harder for them to do that maintenance. It's backwards, it's upside down. So that's what I would ask the manager to bring to us in December. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Madam Clerk? We are at new business. Does anyone have any new business items? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to shout out downtown Peoria this past weekend. Peoria downtown was popping. My fraternity, shout out to Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. We had our statewide conference at the Shared in Four Points. We had a few hundred alphas from all over the state here in Peoria. And so me and my fraternity brothers were looking for some places to eat on Friday, and everything was, was full because of the Keith Urban Concert. There was a volleyball tournament. We had the cross-country tournament the next day on Saturday. And while they were complaining, I was excited because I'm like, that's HRA tax. You know what I'm saying? That's my councilman hat on. Like, I don't care about your hour and a half wait on this food. Let's, let's generate these tax dollars so we can grow our economy locally. But I'm just very excited to see, and the weather was beautiful. Just being able to walk around downtown, you could just really feel the energy. And so as we continue to have these conversations about investing in downtown, making downtown vibrate again, that is our crown jewel. And so I just really want to give a shout out to the hotels, the different restaurants, because I know that there was a lot of pressure because there was a lot of people downtown. But it was a great opportunity. We had a lot of brothers who were from all over the state and had a good time in Peoria. Sometimes those Chicago brothers, they can get a little bougie. So I was glad to show them what we can do. Also, thank you to Public Works for lighting up the bridge as well, too. Black and Gold for our fraternity as well. So again, just shout out to Peoria, shout out to downtown. We're on our way.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. I would also add that the IHSA Cross Country Meet was here, bringing about 20,000 people to the area. So great weekend. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question for Mr. Manager. Didn't get a chance to call you today, so you could prepare. But I know you know this subject very well. I'm getting more and more phone calls all the time, especially for people on, on fixed income. Can you speak a little bit about the utility, people's utility bill, and what the city is doing or not doing to try to help people as we go into this 2023 possible, probable recession?
So as we're, so there's a number of things that we're doing as far as, as far as utility bills. I mean, we have, we have for people on a fixed income. As part of our American Rescue Plan funding, we've set aside some money for utility assistance. We are continuing to look at, at when will be the best time to exercise an electricity contract to try and lock in better pricing. As you know, we couldn't get bids based upon the timing of when we went out of the market in June after kind of the, the turmoil that hit in April. So hopefully, if we can look at a different time to exercise that, that purchasing power option, we can buy on behalf of our residents that are part of our aggregation program. And then, you know, I think is with what you're doing with, you know, the budget next week with the Stormwater Utility Fund, and looking at, at that, freezing that rate for next year, that's another. That was anticipated to, to follow the rate of inflation, which would have been almost an eight or eight and a half percent increase in, in rates this past, this coming year. So there's some, some dollars that will be saved by the, by the city making actions that will put money back into the pockets of the residents.
So where the, our constituent, where should they go if you want information? Just talk about that on our website, or?
We do have, maybe if I could ask Director Doolands here, he can come talk about the utility assistance program and what we're working out there.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Manager. Thank you, Councilman. The utility assistance program that we launched with the American Rescue Plan money, the application period has closed. Closed about four weeks ago, as we let council know. So the best place for any residents who are looking for additional utility assistance would be to call 211. They do a fantastic job of being up to date on all the resources that exist in our community. And they can provide the most updated information on what we have and what other nonprofits have. And then I think we are very lucky to have the township supervisor here, too. Maybe want to talk about her. Her and I talked about the program, and they also have a utility assistance program. Sorry? You on the spot?
The township does still provide utility assistance. Usually the first two days of the month, they call in phone calls for appointments for the entire, for that current month that we're here. We are seeing very, very, very high levels of telephone call. Recently, we have received about four times the amount of phone calls that we have received in the last year. So we are asking residents to do their information, resources. You know, there are some, kind of limited because there is a very, very high request level. The way that the hammer builds are is taking advantage of that on the residents within the community. And we're seeing that. And I'm sure all of you are all aware of that from your constituents as well. But the township, you know, can always call the township for additional information. But typically, the first two days of the month, we take phone calls for anyone that is looking out for hammer assistance and kind of further assistance.
Gentlemen and ladies supervisor? Other new business? I have one new business item. I'd like to make a statement. I sent it out to the media, a statement in regard to the officer involved shooting. I would like to express my sincere condolences to the family and the friends of Mr. Vincent Richmond. A beloved family man and recognized community member. His loss is not only felt throughout the East Bluff, where he worked for many years, but throughout the entire city. I recognize that the family and the community want answers. The Illinois State Police is the lead agency on the investigation and complete transparency with our community is of utmost importance. The Peoria Police Department will continue to work with Illinois State Police until their investigation has concluded. Ask, I ask for the community's patience as they complete that process. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
I think we have five. The first is Mr. Mike Rucker.
Madam Mayor and members of the council and city staff, thank you so much for having me. My name is Mike Rucker. I'm the chairman of Trail Advocates for Central Illinois, formerly known as Friends of the Rock Island Trail, which is an organization that dates back 30 years and worked very closely with Bill Rutherford and George Blumenschein and George Perea to create the first rail trail in Illinois. That's Illinois State Trail, the Rock Island State Trail. So that's where we come from. But we are doing so much more now than just the Rock Island Trail. I mean, obviously, the Greenway is an extension of the trail, but we're working with other communities, too. So we changed the name to Trail Advocates. And then to gain more strength, we joined with Bike Peoria. So we are now actually a committee of Bike Peoria. Brent Baker, the president of Bike Peoria, was here shortly, but he had another appointment. So we're working very closely together and making a lot of progress. You have two things that we, I think, passed to each of you. One is the bulletin from last Tuesday, when we had the, shall I say, public event, thank you event, to promote, shall I say, the extension of the Rock Island Greenway. across former Royal Drive. And we had overflow crowd, lots of enthusiasm. Bikers showed up, and it just shows the enthusiasm there is for trails in general. Just look at, at northern, the north end of the city where the, the developments are happening there with housing because people want to be close to those trails. Trails bring people to the city. I've been in touch with quite a number of organizations from other parts of the state who come here just to, to be involved with the trails. So you're making good progress with that. We thank you very much. That's our purpose primarily this evening. The other piece of paper is a very rough map showing, you know, where the, what the extension might be. And right now, these two show slightly different directions for that from Park Street, right behind the Glen Oak Park, down to Abingdon, and then another several hundred yards down to possibly Adams Street. And right now, the thought is to, by the city, I believe, is to have it go down Abingdon Street, crossing Jefferson, crossing Adams, and then, you know, down to the trail at the riverfront. We're also wanting you to look at the possibility of going straight down to Adams. There's only about 150 feet along Adams Street to Caroline Street, which then will take you just immediately down to the Deadwater Playground right there at the trail. So anyway, regardless, where it goes, it'll be great, and we appreciate it. So thank you very much for your efforts, and let us know how we can help in any way to further gain, you know, trails, pedestrian access, and those kind of amenities for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rucker. Next, we have Matthew Hayes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilman, members of the horseshoe. I want to start off tonight by saying thank you to all of my fellow city members who decided to, who decided that it was time to start investing in their futures. I want to say thank you to those who came out to support us tonight, who aren't in our union. It means a lot. It looks good and green tonight. For those of you who may not know, we are AFSCME Local 3464, a union for the employees of the city in Peoria, the Peoria Public Library, the Peoria Civic Center, and the Peoria Housing Authority. We have a voice, let's make sure it's heard. Tonight, our union members have gathered here to voice some of our issues and make our presence known. For years now, the union has been weak from high turnover rates, minimal staffing, increased workloads, lack of wage compensation, and other departmental issues leading to a work environment that doesn't fit the needs of its employees. For four years, I sat in this building every council meeting, and I listened to this council and council members previous, praise the work and the services that we provide to the public. If the numbers and the reports that we make happen day after day doing the on-the-ground bootwork can justify the pay increases of management throughout the city, it can certainly justify it for us as well. I'm proud of the support that we have grown over the past few weeks, and I'm excited to see where our new union takes us. Just like it's our duty to vote our elected officials into office, it's our duty as union members to make sure we have the working conditions and representation we deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alejandro Aguilar?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I have here a letter from our vice president, Anthony Wolliver, who couldn't be here for some of the staffing issues that we're gonna talk to in the coming weeks. He wrote, "I would like to start by saying that none of us want to be here today. We want to work our jobs, serve the community, and go home at the end of the day to our families without having to worry about what goes on at our jobs. We work for the city because we truly enjoy our work and we value serving the people of Peoria. But for quite some time, we have been faced with requests after requests to make do with less. The city government has used every crisis to cut city services and staff, even when in many cases, economic relief was provided by the state and federal governments. This has resulted in city departments where one person is doing the work two or three used to. City departments where the norm is for employees to work 50 to 70-hour work weeks, and city employees have taken practical pay cuts due to inflation. And it doesn't just affect us, it affects the people of Peoria. It affects them and overworked code enforcement workers who can't maintain the type of rental inspection process that would prevent the worst abuses of landlords. It affects people trying to get records or vehicle releases from the police department who used to be able to get many of those services 24/7, and now can only get them nine to five, Monday through Friday. It affects the libraries and the librarians. It affects people who can't pay their taxes at City Hall. It affects people who have trouble getting the roads plowed, and the list goes on. Not all those services are provided by the members of our union, but many of them are. And while many of our members are making do with less, doing more work for less pay, many of our managers are getting 4% in their wages yearly. Increase of those wages. In short, we feel overworked, underpaid, and most definitely, under-respected. We want a fair contract, one that recognizes our contributions to the filing, to the functioning of the city, of the role we play in protecting the safety and poverty, the properties of the Peorians alike, and the fact that we have always risen to the occasion to serve the city when it was in need of us. Thank you."
Thank you. Brandon Linkswyler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members, for your time tonight for me to speak and for my other colleagues to speak. I'm here because of the challenging work conditions at specifically the ECC where I work, the Electronic Communication Center, the 911 Center. Very few, very few people in our department make it through training within the last several years due to the staffing shortage. It takes years for someone to get fully trained in our center because we don't have the staff to train people, which ultimately, it ultimately results in a lower quality of overall services to our city because of how many hours we have to work due to the staffing shortages. We lose people due to the fact of our, our wages not increasing year by year due to inflation, and we are behind the times on competitive wages and inflation. We love to work for the city. We love our job. We love providing the help to the people that need it. But we are at a point where we need change to continue that due to our staffing shortages. We all appreciate the time to present our concerns tonight and trust that you will help us address that in these next coming months. Thank you.
And last, we have Christopher Ferris.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. My name is Christopher Ferris, and I work at the Peoria Public Library. However, I am also a member of AFSCME Local 3464. I really didn't know what I was gonna talk about tonight. I just know I wanted to show up in support and in solidarity with my brothers and sisters. But as I listened to the council proceedings tonight, there are a couple of things that stood out to me. And one was surplus. And the other one was someone said, and I can't recall who, but it takes two to tango. And I want to encourage you to take those words into consideration as you oversee the negotiations that are gonna go on between the city and AFSCME Local 3464. Also, I would encourage you to look back at what just occurred over the course of many months, which was a very difficult negotiation situation between the Peoria Teachers Union and District 150. There was, it appeared to be a lack of oversight on the part of the leaders over that negotiation. And, and I think that was a big mistake, and I think that's why you saw it last so long and why, why ultimately it took, it took a strike vote to, to get the District 150 to come to the table. So I would encourage you not to let that happen in regards to negotiations between Local 3464 and the city of Peoria. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We do not have an executive session, so we are at adjournment.
Can I get a motion to adjourn moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Jackson? Please cast your ballots. I think Councilwoman Jensen is not here. Thank you for your service.